Please stand before the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you for joining. We will now call this regular School Board meeting of Independent School District Number 544 to order. And in doing so, I'll ask the clerk to establish our quorum. Kirby Anderson, Natalie Knutson, Melanie Cole, present, Matthew Lynn.
Here.
Missy Hermes, present, Stephen Vigesson.
Here.
We have a quorum. All right. We have before us an agenda that I'm seeking to get a motion to approve. So, all right, and second?
Seconded.
Any discussion on the agenda? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. We have a resolution on acknowledgements and we would say thank you to Gordon T. Sted for the donation of a trumpet to the Kennedy Secondary School Music Department. Also, thank you to Joel Anderson and Stacy Berta for donations to the Otter Angel account, which is an account that's created to anonymously assist families unable to pay for student meals. Thank you to the Merla P. Frame Revocable Living Trust for the donation to the Elementary Music Department. Also, thank you to the Ferguson Falls 544 Education Foundation who awarded almost $37,000 in grants to the Ferguson School District. This year's classroom wish list had 107 requests, and I believe all were filled. Is that accurate? Yeah, so thank you very much. That's a generous grant. So I will offer this resolution and move for its adoption. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
All right, any discussion? Okay, Melanie Cole.
Yes.
Matthew Lynn.
Yes.
Missy Hermes, yes, Stephen Vigesson.
Yes.
Resolution is adopted. Thank you. We will have reports this evening, beginning with Melissa Amundson, ECFE Otter Preschool Update. So welcome to the meeting. Thanks for coming in to give us an update.
Hello, yes. Welcome.
I have your hand up in front.
Yes. Elaine Grant goes ahead of time. So Melissa Amundson, I'm the Early Childhood Education Administrator over at Lincoln School. So we've now been in Lincoln School for one entire full school year, so we're on our second full school year now over at Lincoln School. And our early childhood programming, just as a reminder, includes three main programs. So one is our Otter Preschool, School Readiness Otter Preschool Program, which serves our three- to five-year-old students in Otter Preschool. Our ECFE, our Early Childhood Family Education Program, which serves our children zero, two, those not yet in kindergarten, and their families in classes. And then our last one is our United Way Childcare Visitor Program, and that is a collaborative grant with the United Way of Otter Tail County, providing home visits to childcare licensed family childcares in the district. So I'm going to start by just giving a couple little updates, particularly around enrollment and some building initiatives that we've kind of undertaken out at Lincoln School. So our Otter Preschool Program has been just enrolling, we're busy, and getting the year rolling off really well. We have a current enrollment of 144 students, and I actually have two applications on my desk. So I think one thing that's of note is that we enroll in Otter Preschool year-round. So as families move in and out of the district, we happily take those enrollments throughout the year. And so we are sitting higher than we have been in the past during this time of year. So we are very full, and we're excited about that, yet we still have a few spots, a handful of spots in both our three-year-old and our four- and five-year-old programs for students to be able to move into the district, which is how we like to have that, so we have the ability to serve those coming in. We currently have 53 three-year-olds, and they are served in half-day programming. They can choose to attend two or four half-days. And we have 91 four- and five-year-olds that are attending. Those students can attend either two full days or four full days. This is our second year of offering that, and it has been incredibly popular. It really came from our advisory board, adding that those full-day options and the support of you guys to be able to allow that. And it really helps working families be able to accommodate schedules a lot better. And so typically, those spots are chosen first. We do also have a half-day, four-day-a-week program for four-year-olds as well. We do have a really great collaboration with the Early Childhood Special Education Department, and so we give referrals to them. And we currently have 17 students who are receiving Early Childhood Special Education services.
On site?
Correct, yes. So that does not count any of the zero to three, so that would just be four- and five-year-olds, or three, four, and five-year-olds, excuse me. This year, with our Otter Preschool, we started the year hiring two new staff. We are, I'm excited to say, we are fully staffed, so that was kind of a challenge over the summer, and we're really excited to be running full capacity. We are working on a building initiative this year, and I gave you a little handout. The design credit goes to Jesse Thorsted. But we rolled out a really exciting initiative in Lincoln School called Safe, Kind, and Ready. And we feel it is our part of kind of fulfilling the district's mission, vision, and values to really prepare our youngest learners for our current place where they're at, but also helping to support them for where they will be moving next into kindergarten. So our Safe, Kind, and Ready initiative is kind of our common building expectations for our children three, four, and five years old, supporting in helping them make good decisions, like how can we be kind to our friends? How can we be safe? We use our walking feet in the hallway. How can we be ready? Our eyes are watching, our ears are listening, our bodies are calm and ready. But it really just helps them to kind of have that expectation of how we can be good learners in our school district. And so it's been going really, really well. A lot of preschoolers can already continue to recite back to us that we are utterly safe, we are utterly kind, and we are utterly ready. And so we're really excited about that initiative in our building, and it goes through all of our classrooms. So we posted our poster everywhere, and we really try to refer to that often. A couple of the other things is that that Safe, Kind, and Ready really builds off our social-emotional curriculum that we have, which is Second Step. And that's just that, supporting children through emotions and making good decisions. One other thing that is new is that in October, our teachers finished their fall assessment data, so they have put that in. We utilize the work sampling system, so that checklist gets done three times per year. And so the first one has been done. And then we are working with Amelia. We are on the docket for curriculum adoption, and so we are starting that process with her. We have started to reach out to various publishers and getting some samples in, and we are working with her on that process. We have narrowed our focus into our language and literacy area, which we've identified through some of our data collection, as well as kind of a needs assessment of what we currently have. Then I will talk about our ECFE program, which is our Early Childhood Family Education Program. COVID really took kind of a hit on that program because families just weren't comfortable going out and gathering in groups. And particularly those children who are zero to three, so could be the most susceptible. But this year, we have seen a huge turnaround. I'm excited to report that we have very full classes. We have classes that have waiting lists. For our ECFE classes, we typically enroll up to 12 children because their adults are with them, and then just the space that we have available to give a quality classroom experience for them. But we do have many options for them, so we have classes five mornings a week that families can choose from. We have two afternoons a week, and three evening options. So we really are trying to cast the widest net to serve the greatest amount of families that works into their schedules. We are currently serving 124 individual children in 91 families. So we're really excited to see that turn in that program and seeing our classes fuller this fall. And then lastly, we have our United Way ECFE Childcare Visitor Program. And like I mentioned earlier, that is through a grant from the United Way. She is currently serving 14 childcare providers. The licensed teacher is going on to 14 childcare providers. We did have requests for additional, from additional providers, but due to the limitations of that grant, we have a waiting list for that. But she is serving 129 children in those family childcare. So I think it's really exciting when you add up all the numbers. We are currently touching 397 children within the school district, and so I think that's really a really exciting number that we are getting those services and that education to our youngest learners. I will open it up if anyone has any questions or any other comments.
So are you maxed out with kids, or do you have, you said you keep a couple of spots open, but?
Yep, and I looked right before I came, and I have about six three-year-old spots available and about five four- and five-year-old spots available. And that's about where we like to have it sit.
Sure.
So that we have some availability. It's not always people's first desired spot, but there is a spot available.
The students' work sampling, do you intend, what is the intent on that, just to show parents where they're at? Or to show kindergarten teachers, or just staff in general, to, in that board you're talking about, kind of where does that?
All three. So first and foremost, to show the growth for the child over the course of the year. So that is a formalized state assessment. And so they collect and they utilize that during conferences, which ours are in February and then again in May. So they'll show that growth for the child over the course of the year. Because we do input that digitally, teachers can pull that and pull classroom data. So after each checkpoint period, which there's three, then they can kind of assess, gosh, I need to do more of, you know, X, Y, Z rhyming, or, you know, letter recognition, et cetera. And then we actually do send the children who go on to kindergarten in the district, we do send on that assessment data to Scott over at McKinley, and then he distributes that to the teachers who get them as well, so that they have some kind of base information about the students that they're receiving.
Do visitors staying all day, the full-day plan, do they then eat lunch, eat meals with the kindergarteners, or do they eat separately?
So our full-day program, we do offer breakfast to all children who attend a morning session. So that would be the three-year-olds or the four- and five-year-olds. They do pay the regular lunch cost, as the same as the district, or those who are on free reduced, they can fill out the application. And then at lunchtime, yes, they do receive lunch, and they eat that in the cafeteria right there at Lincoln School. So, or they can choose to send from home, but we highly encourage them to utilize the district's meal service.
Any other questions for Melissa Amundson? Thank you for the report.
Thank you. No, appreciate it.
Next, we will virtually get an IBLE audit. Is that accurate? I don't know, turn it over, you may.
Okay, so John Hagan from IBLE will be presenting audit results tonight. John was a member and supervisor. Is that your title for the team that did the audit?
Manager.
Manager, okay.
That might be a little bit more than I deserve.
Okay, sounds good. Well, go ahead. I hope you should have a copy of the presentation that he'll be reviewing.
And I will share my screen here.
I do not.
So hopefully you guys can all see a little presentation here of a little boy holding a lightbulb. I regret to inform you, that is not me. I don't think my mom ever got me to sit still long enough to get my hair to be like that. But tonight, we will be going over the executive summary. First, before I get too far into this, can everybody hear me okay, or should I speak up a little bit?
You're fine.
Good, okay. So tonight, we will be going over the executive summary. This is really kind of a condensed summarized version of the financial statements. In the government world, those financial statements are getting longer and longer. It's actually getting close to about 100 pages now. So instead of going through all 100 pages of that, and really just too much information to take in and kind of put you guys to sleep, we put this format together with some tables and graphs for comparative purposes. Hopefully about 10, 15 minutes tonight. But with that, let's jump right into it. And go into the audit results and findings. So the end goal of every single audit is to receive an audit opinion. So what does that mean? Well, management is responsible for three things. That the financial statements are prepared in accordance with GAAP, that they are prepared fairly, and that they contain no material misstatements. So then we, as auditors, we come out through a series of procedures and processes and tests. We get to an end conclusion and issue an audit opinion. This year, the district did receive an unmodified audit opinion or a clean audit opinion, which is ultimately exactly what you're going for. Just for a little bit of reference, this is the same opinion that the district has received in previous years. With that, there is kind of a secondary audit of just the federal funds. So this is triggered anytime a federal entity expends more than $750,000. It's kind of a magic threshold that the federal government has out there. For a district of your guys' size, you guys cross over that threshold every single year. But because of that, we do have a separate series of tested procedures relating to just the federal dollars, more of a compliance rules and regulations audit, sometimes referred to as a single audit. The federal program that we specifically looked at this year was for the ESSAR federal programs and that COVID-19 relief. And the district did receive an unmodified opinion over just these federal single audits, so again, exactly what you're going for. Along with our audit findings, our audit opinions, we do issue audit findings if needed to be communicated to those in charge of governance, or you guys here at the board. They're broken down in a couple different categories, and I'll kind of go through these here. First one being your financial statements. So I'm just going to kind of lump these two findings together. So preparation of financial statements, including the SEFA, which is the Schedule Federal Awards. And number two is the material journal entries. So IBLE does prepare the financial statements, and to do so and get those financials in accordance with GAAP, we do propose a handful of material journal entries. This is something that we kind of expected going in, similar findings what the district had received in previous years, and something that we would expect being there going forward as well. Pretty common for districts of your size, and really can't get away with it too much unless the district does prepare their own financials. So again, pretty normal, what we're expecting kind of going into it. The second bucket is over just the federal funds. The district did receive one finding this year for lack of review over coding of expenditures of federal awards. Really, this came down to some journal entries that were used to code some of the expenditures needed for the ESSAR funding, and some of the individual payrolls that were utilized for that federal funding were doubled up on. Now, that doesn't mean that the people received double pay. That wasn't the case. It was more of just a kind of a journal entry. So we just, we corrected that with a proposed journal entry and moved some additional separate salaries into that were allowable. So overall, pretty minor, did not require to change our audit opinion, but does require that we do report them formally in the financials. The third bucket is Minnesota Legal Compliance. This is a separate set of procedures that auditors are required for all Minnesota governmental entities. The big, one of the big areas for districts specifically is over student activities. So the finding that this relates to, and also similar to last year, was for an inactive student activity account, so not having receipts or disbursements for a full fiscal year. Because of that, they are required to have a form filled out, and one did not have a form. Again, this is pretty common that we see on districts, especially in this COVID environment. A lot of activities are not undergoing activities because of COVID environment, so something we expect to kind of be corrected going forward. Pretty easy fix. Next slide is GASB 87 implementation. This is strictly just an FYI slide, but there was a new governmental accounting standard that was required to be implemented in this current year, which was GASB 87. I don't expect anybody to know the intricacies of this, but from a high-level perspective, this brought on operating these transactions from both the lessor and the lessy side onto the balance sheet of the district. So it doesn't change anything operationally for the district. It was strictly a reporting. But something that was a rather big undertaking from an audit and also the staff to help us provide information and work through agreements and stuff. So kind of just wanted to point it out to the board that this did happen, and that it was a rather big undertaking. All right, so let's get into some of the numbers. First slide we have here is the cash and investment balances for the district over the last 10 years, just for kind of comparative purposes. The ending cash and investment balance for FY '22 came in at about $19.6 million. One thing to point out, that none of these numbers include the capital projects fund, just because depending on timing of bonds and projects ongoing, that can really fluctuate things. So just for comparative purposes, we exclude that. So this is where the numbers fell for cash. You can see a pretty healthy growth here in FY '22, which is going to be a reoccurring theme as we go through tonight's presentation, largely likely due to the additional federal funding FY '22 in multiple different areas. The next handful of slides will focus strictly on the general fund. This is the main operating fund, as you guys all know. Before we get into that, just a quick rap here for the total ADM served for the district over the last 10 years. I think this is just a really nice slide for you guys to visualize, to see where the ADM's numbers stacked up historically. Obviously, ADMs are a significant driver for state revenues coming in and also expenditures for the district.
Hey, do you want to just say what ADM means for the general public, so that they?
Yes, I actually don't even know if I have what the technical language is, but it's your pupil count essentially, the number of students that you serve.
Average daily membership.
If anybody else knows what ADM, that's the only thing I refer to as that, I guess.
Average daily membership.
Sure, students is what I, I think my answer is.
We'll just put students.
Yes, students served.
Yes, yep. All those little, those little feet and maybe big feet running around in the hallways, that's your number there. Sure, so next slide is a budget to actual comparison. There's a lot of numbers here, and I'm not going to go take too big a deep dive into any particular numbers. I'll just kind of hit it at a high level. Budgeting is not an exact science. You know, we do what we best what we can with the information at the same time. But, you know, if anyone could tell the future, they probably shouldn't be working. They should be millionaires at home, you know, winning the lottery or something. So for the district, the actual ending final budget is your second column, with that third column there being your actual, where the numbers stacked out, and your last column there being your variance. So a couple key kind of larger variances, if you will. First one being your federal sources in the revenue, that third line down. Really does stem from the district being conservative, not budgeting for those federal dollars that were that COVID relief. A little bit of an unknown MDE was kind of back and forth in the final numbers that each district would give. So it just wasn't a budget there. But actual numbers came in significantly over that, obviously, increasing your revenues there significantly. Dropping down into the next section for expenditures. Again, the only real significant differences are just kind of classifications between regular instruction and instruction and people's support on kind of where those ESSAR dollars were coded. Again, just a reclassification there with overall expenditures being almost right on budget. So after some small transfers, there was a $60,000 transfer to the capital projects funds this year for some additional kind of project expenditures, kind of to help fund that, as well as a $2,000 community service transfer. We'll touch base on here a little bit later. But ending fund balance this year, after a good year with a strong increase of just under $5 million, ends at about $14.6 million. I would kind of like to highlight or circle that number. Keep that in the back of your mind. We'll be kind of going over that final fund balance number here on the next handful of slides. So what does a positive fund balance do for you? It does do a number of things for the district. First, contributing to a favorable bond rating. So going out in future years if bonding is needed for projects, capitalizing on the lower interest rate, paying less in interest. Secondly, producing investment income, so really having your money work for you, kind of a source of working capital for cash flow needs. Really that passive money sitting in the bank account through interest. And then third, most importantly, offering a cushion for unexpected expenditures or revenue shortfalls in the future. Really kind of that, you know, savings account, if you will, from a personal standpoint, kind of your rainy day bucket. There are a couple different categories of fund balances. Again, I'm not going to spend too much time other than just kind of pointing out that these are, there are different buckets. The next slide will kind of go in depth a little bit more with some of the numbers as of the year-end. But just wanted to kind of point that out, that there are different buckets. So going off of that last slide, the different buckets of fund balance for the district as of 6/30/22. First one being non-spendable. This is kind of money that's already been spent through inventory or prepaid. The next four, if you will, are restrictions from MDE kind of for different programs, student activities, scholarships, money that's kind of earmarked, if you will, from the district. And then your last bucket would be your unassigned, or kind of the truly undesignated funds for the district. Really what is at the district's disposal, how to spend and use. So now I kind of want to highlight that unassigned, that $10.6 million, that will kind of get discussed here on the next couple of slides. I guess I got a little bit ahead of myself. This is kind of the same information on that fund balance breakout for the different categories, just in a bar graph. Give you guys some comparatives over the last 10 years. As you can see, very, very steady growth, and again, a large jump in FY '22 due to that additional federal money that was received. So I'll give you a couple of seconds to kind of take in this graph.
And just for the general public, that the ESSAR funding is one-time funding from the federal government. It's not an ongoing funding source, correct?
Correct, yes. It has been kind of going on for a couple of years, started in FY '21 is when COVID onset, but really picked up in FY '22, but it is now going away. You know, there still could be some small remnants of COVID relief, but it will not be the same dollar amounts that the district has seen here in FY '22.
So if we look at the slide that says how much our fund balance grew and was close to $5 million, and that's close to the amount of federal dollars that we got. Had we not received that, we'd be sitting pretty good still. We'd be pretty much right on target, right?
Yes, yep, yep. So really, you know, the district did kind of capitalize in receiving that where they, it wasn't necessarily needed to kind of continue the operations and have that steady, you know, not even a growth, but just maintaining that fund balance. So that federal money really was a kind of a surplus in addition this year, yep. Any other questions on this one? And we will kind of go over some more fund balance information here in the next couple of slides as well, so. So that kind of transitions really nicely into, you know, where should the district be? You know, there isn't really a right or wrong answer. You know, there's no golden rule or golden line on what exactly the district should have. Every district operates a little bit differently, different preferences based on, you know, size or location, et cetera. But the district currently does have a policy stating that they would like no less than 8% of the annual budget of expenditures in that unassigned fund balance. So I'm going to flip back quickly here. That $10.6 million unassigned is what we're referring to here. So based on the district's policy, that goal would be to having a target of about $3 million. So again, the district came in quite a bit over that. Just for another point of reference, the GFOA is a national governmental agency out there. This does cover all governmental entities, so cities, school districts, you know, tribes, counties, et cetera. But they kind of just have a general guideline out there, about $16.67 are about two months of annual operating expenditure sitting in that unassigned fund balance. So just kind of a point of reference as well. So to kind of, to show a graph of that, here is the district's unassigned and unrestricted. They're basically the same thing. So unassigned would be that uncovered $10.6 million sitting in fund balance there. So the maroon line here does represent the district's fund balance. And again, as you can see, the district is well above that policy. So definitely meeting your goals there. Another way to look at this would be without any additional revenue coming in, the district could operate as-is for just over about three and a half months, could carry on at the current expenditure level without any money coming in. Again, there is no kind of golden rule on this. Some other areas for kind of perspective is, I would say, the average that we kind of see through the districts that we service, which is about 75 Minnesota districts, is kind of somewhere in that 20% to 25% ballpark. So a little bit, you know, over that, I would say, and again, that's kind of a rough estimate for you guys as well. So that kind of ends my spiel over just the general fund. But before we go tonight, I do want to point out a couple of the other funds for the district. First one is the community service. So this graph is gonna, this table's gonna look a little bit goofy, so bear with me here as I kind of explain what's going on here. So fund balance was built up since early 2013, and kind of working its way, building up and up with revenue of the community service increasing each year, right, to increase that fund balance. In 2021, MDE, they gave a one-time rule, if you will, and a In 2021, MDE, they gave a one-time rule, if you will, an exception, to allow transfers out of community service. So Region One and in kind of what we saw with majority of districts did capitalize on that one-time rule to transfer money out and they did transfer money out in, in, at the end of 2021, so last year. So that's why you'll see a 2021 balance of zero. A district can always, always transfer money into the community service, but that was only a one-time thing. I don't know if there has been another situation where MDE allowed that. So that's kind of where that, that kind of transition or why, where that came from was that COVID kind of relief and allowing districts to kind of take advantage of that. Fast forward a little bit in FY22, community service did undergo a deficit, which means they, they had more expenditures than revenue coming in in FY22 alone. The district can do a transfer to kind of alleviate that. There was like a $2,000 transfer to, to alleviate a specific fund balance restriction. But overall going forward, it would be important, and I know talking with Renee, this is kind of what the district's preference would be, is to kind of analyze community service to see how, you know, those fees and participation are coming in to, to make sure that revenue is, is offsetting at the minimum or more than, than expenditures. I'd say the last couple of years have been pretty chaotic with COVID, so they're kind of tough to look at. So FY23 will give the district a much more, you know, consistent barometer of how the community service is operating. Before we move on, just quickly more just in FYI, it is not uncommon for us to see community service, you know, kind of operate as a deficit. That's kind of up to district preference and then annually, we'll see a lot of times a transfer from the general fund to the community service to kind of offset that. So something that we, we do see quite regularly and, and is really up to the district preference. The last fund to touch on quickly is the food service fund. So again, this graph shows the, the fund balances over the last 10 years of, of just the food service. Again, you'll see a significant increase in 2022, again, due to that federal relief for the COVID-19 as all students received, kind of freeing reduced meal pricing. So additional money coming in FY22, which is why you see a significant growth there. The maroon line here does indicate a maximum, I'm saying maximum in kind of finger quotes, allowable fund balance from MDE, which equates about three months of expenditures. The reason I say in air quotes is I've seen districts be over this maximum amount for a handful of years and, and nothing ever comes of it. But really what MDE is getting at is they would like districts to spend that fund balance down, you know, capitalizing on some new maybe equipment or kitchen, you know, things or improvements, whatever it may be to kind of spend that, that money down just because food service isn't designed to kind of operate as, as a business. You know, you should be kind of breaking even, or that's kind of the rough goal. Again, 2022 is an anomaly with that extra federal funding. But I just want to point that out, maybe think about spending that down. But as we get into FY23, more normal, maybe that comes down naturally, so.
I should just point out here too, US Department of Ag as well as MDE did increase that temporarily, the maximum allowable limit, they increased it from three months to six months. And so until further notice at this point. I mean, they said eventually they'll go back down to the three months, but for now, six months is acceptable. More at about 3.7.
Is that about the time they mandated we raise lunch prices? That our fund balance got higher in the food service?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, just checking. It's so, it's so goofy.
Yeah.
Okay.
I mean, it, it really is a kind of a good problem to have, you know, that excess fund balance. I've seen a lot of districts that kind of have the same situation with the increased fund balance because of that federal money. A lot of them are like, wait, we haven't upgraded, you know, these, you know, items in the kitchens and different food service related stuff. So I think that's kind of what some districts are, are planning to kind of do, so. Completely up to you guys, just wanted to, to point that out. So last slide I have here is kind of what's next in other topics. Again, this is just an FYI, but federal grant programs on the horizon. The American Rescue Plan is kind of on their way. I don't think it'll impact districts too much, but just keep an eye out for MDE. If, if there is some additional grant money, now try and capitalize on that, just keep your ears open. Second bullet is GASB number 96. So I did have a slide over GASB 87 a little earlier about operating leases. This is a very similar governmental standard that will be in effect next year for subscription-based information technology arrangements, which is really just fancy wording to say, kind of those online licensing, like Microsoft, Microsoft programs. So those will be coming onto the balance sheet as well. And then lastly, ongoing communication throughout the year. So at IBALE, we do offer different online publications and webinars for different trainings throughout the year. So Renee and staff can take advantage of that and then also just access the specialists. You know, use us as a resource for any questions throughout the year. I'm pretty confident that if I don't know the answer, I can find somebody here at I that does. We do have a lot of professionals in different areas. So always encourage you guys to bounce ideas or questions off of us throughout the year. So with that, I'll kind of open it up to questions. I know we, we had a few kind of pop-ups throughout, but now that everybody's seen everything, does anybody have any specific questions or areas to kind of talk, talk about further?
Anyone from the board? It doesn't sound like it, thanks for the presentation.
Yeah, as you meant, thank you guys for having me. Before I go, I do want to say a special thank you to Renee and Marcy and kind of everyone else in the finance department for helping us out on the audit. We are pretty demanding when we're, we're onsite for about a week, we're pretty demanding. But then after the fact, you know, through our review and process and stuff, we do have lots of emails and phone calls that take up a lot of their time. So we do appreciate all their help. It makes our, their responsiveness and helpfulness makes our job really easy, so we appreciate that.
Thank you.
Otherwise, I will let you guys go. If you have any other questions or anything else does pop up, you know, kind of relay that through Renee and we'll get back to you as soon as possible.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you guys.
Yes, so we will have the audit on the agenda later just to note it, but we won't be taking any of that approval from you. So we'll move on to our other reports and correspondence and I'll begin with my report. Special education cooperative executive board met today and talking about probably the most significant thing I brought out of it was the programming, the in-house, what am I thinking of? The program for the in-school student aides at Roosevelt Education Center. So I, I'm drawing up like, but anyway, the, where the students are supported by local mental health staff and day treatment, that's what it's called. So anyway, so we have filled that up. We have students from each of the member districts there. We are, I think, to the limit and hiring, looking at another paraprofessional to support that program. So we have expanded that from about three students to, I think, 11. So, so that is going well. And just the director, Jackie Ward, has trained a couple in-house CPI trainers, which is the initials for non-invasive whole therapy intervention. And so that all the special education staff are getting refreshers on that for those occasions when they do need to intervene and hold the child back from hurting themselves or others. And so that's a couple of the pieces that are, that are going on there. So kind of exciting, a lot of programming review and efforts being done. And then in terms of Region One Board, the, we just talked about their daily functions. Payroll outsourcing is, is, we've got two districts there. Time Tracker has 49 districts enrolled in it and 31 of them are live. The rest are waiting to get online and by April, when Time Clocks Plus ends, they should have about 50 districts on that. So they are working on the mobile app and with facial recognition as an option and a few other things. It's kind of fun to see what kind of ingenuity they're using. Although I do have some feedback for them about just maybe, maybe the program's not running so properly. And then that's about it. Northwest Langs is fully reimbursed. That's the library system where they put in, they use the grants to fund the libraries and then you get reimbursed from the federal government and usually that goes rather poorly, but they're all fully reimbursed. So that was, that was a real headline for the director up there, Bob Wheeler. And that's all that I have. We, on negotiations, Natalie and I have continued to work with the various paraprofessional groups and we've made significant progress there. And some that will come back to the board table for approval soon. That's all I have. Any questions on that? Okey dokey, then on to you, Matthew. Well, Missy, Missy Hermes should be next, yeah.
Well, I should be next, okay, all right. So I have actually three reports, so you can add, so you can write down. I'm Policy, Staff Development and APAC, which stands for American Indian Parent Advisory Council. And APAC met last week and Mr. Anderson, the principal. And I and Sarah Campa met with parents and we elected a new board. And so I'm, you're, I'm, whether you knew it or not, I'm now at the School Board representative to the APAC.
Thank you.
And then Mary Weaver is the parent president. And we, those, all those names will be on the paperwork that's required to be filled out. We did some planning on what we're going to be doing this year, some activities and speakers and things like that for our American Indian students because we want to increase graduation rates, right? That's why that committee is there. So that's that. And then the Staff Development Committee met last Monday. And remember, we started out with a $44,000 budget. And then that's broken up into three different categories. And we, as school board members, we voted on that, I think, last, at the last meeting. And the sec, the part of that budget that is for teachers and non-certified staff to attend different trainings and so on, that is pretty much wiped out.
That's a good thing though.
That's good.
It, well, one, one thing, well, it's only November, so in that case, it's not good, right? Because then if somebody sees something they wanted to attend in March, now that chances that being fully funded to go to that training or workshop or convention are less likely to happen unless somebody pays for it themselves. But a lot of staff going to music conferences and I know nursing conference, just a variety of different things. And then also some of the money being, was going to be used for a speaker. The committee is still working on which speaker that'll be for a training that's in like February, I think. Okay, so that's the staff development. And then policy, we're going to be looking at those policies later, but I get a lot of questions from stakeholders and parents about our policies. And I like to kind of put them, they also go fit into really three different categories, if you want, will. Some of them are policies that are just for our school district, that we develop those and they're specific to us. Some of them are mandated by the legislature in Minnesota. And then sometimes we have policies that come to us because maybe a court case happened, maybe a Supreme Court case now, or something like that. So we have, we have all three of that policies in all three of those categories that we'll be looking at tonight. So just to look at a few of them. The school meals policy, 534, that's going to be just a little bit of clarification. And also 550 for the guidelines for foreign exchange students, those are specific to our school district. And then others are new because of different things that have happened in the legislature. And that would include 416, 417 and 418, which all deal with THC edibles, et cetera. That passed through the legislature last year. Okay. So there's a variety. All right. I mean, it's a lot of policies. That's the first time we've met this school year. And so it's a long meeting we got to bring.
All right.
Thank you. And of course, they're all online, right? Just anybody wants to read them, all of our policies are online.
Any questions for, or comments for Missy? Moving on then, Matthew.
My report's going to be short today. Minnesota High School League did not meet, they meet December 1st, so I have nothing to report on them. And then Lakes Country Service Co-op didn't meet November 10th, but that was just a regular meeting, business meeting. One thing that I'll just note is that this is kind of the renewal of certain entities for insurance. And those, we have different sized pools and one of the pools is our small pool, which is basically 50 employees and below. And every single one stayed within the co-op they didn't want and they didn't decide to leave. You know, you, you usually you have some that will leave and explore different options or whatever. But for, for a positive is that they'll decide to stay, so, which is always a good thing. When you're in a pool, so. But yeah, other than that, it was just, like I said, there's just been nothing too interesting or out of order.
Okay. Any questions for Matt? Steven Vitasak.
So I missed the curriculum review meeting because of the boys soccer playoff game. So I asked Superintendent Drake to proxy for me at the meeting and he's not here, so I'm proxying back. This is a proxy, proxy report, so don't ask me any questions. But I will read what he wrote. He says, "The meeting began with Amelia taking some time to introduce herself as the new curriculum director." We introduced ourselves. "We reviewed the purpose of the DACK rec and the schedule for the year. We worked in pairs of threes at a table with a couple of course guides from the districts and a copy of the Fergus Falls course guide. When we came back together, we discussed what we liked about the courses taught in Fergus Falls. We also talked about courses that were offered in other schools that we don't offer. We are a fairly traditional, we are fairly traditional in our course offerings, biology, chemistry, physics versus other schools that might offer forensic science, principles of engineering, et cetera. Most of the groups seem to prefer our traditional layout, but that may have only been my perception." Yeah, that's, that's what it says. So it looks like it was more of a preliminary type meeting. I will be at the next one because I don't have any more soccer playoffs to go to.
Thank goodness I play soccer now.
Then it would not be fun to play soccer right now playing with snowmen.
So no other departments reported, just on the only?
Yeah, it wasn't. It was an Olivia appears, so. More come next month on that.
Sounds good. Okay, we'll move on to the general consent items. For consideration in this motion, our approval of the minutes from our October 24th regular board meeting. And Matt's going to fill in tonight for Kirby on the bills and trading report.
Yeah, Steve, because I and I met yesterday about the bills. And we had $2,371,655 in thirty cents worth of bills, nothing out of the ordinary. And Renee answered all of our questions and I would recommend that we approve them.
All right. And I'll turn then to Elaine Jenke for personality.
Okay, good evening, everyone. Few items here to review and request your approval. Mark Disel, long-term substitute math teacher for IQ. Jennifer Carlson and Heather Miller, both IQ elementary teachers. Because as our school year goes by, we increase our students and therefore their contract increases. If you remember last spring, we had reductions in their contract. A lot of them rescinded their contract and now they're building them back up again. So this is our typical process that we follow each year. Certified staff resignation, Alicia Clausen, speech teacher here at Kennedy Secondary School. Support staff resignations, Linda Jensen, food service. Jenny or Jennifer Matheson, pariah here at Adams. She's going on and doing her student teaching, so she's becoming a teacher here, so that's great news. And then Mally, excuse me, Mandy Illison, nursing services. She works 10:30 to 1:30, three hours a day here at Kennedy Secondary School. And then last would be a coach resignation for Steve Olson, head football coach. That's effective the end of October when we place this request in. And a couple memorandums, memorandum of understanding for health insurance benefit change for the Fergus Falls Food Service Association, effective 1/1/2023. And that's based on the fact that the Affordable Care Act changed their, their ratio and we had to meet the letter of the law with that. So what we were offering to them didn't meet the letter of the law. So effective January 1st, we had to increase our contribution as a district towards our health insurance plan. And then the last is a 2022-24 agreement between the board and the Title I paraprofessionals. And so I would request approval of all those items.
All right. Okay. There are motion to approve the general consent items. So moved. I'll take Missy and a second on Steven. And any discussion on these? So just for example, on the, the contracts I've recently been involved in, it's about going up probably about $45 per year, our contribution, times X number of employees for the insurance. So it is adjusting our, our settlement budgets. Is that about right, Renee? Kind of looking from like 285 to 4?
420 or so.
Oh, 420, not 320.
Yeah.
Oh, so let's go.
420, it's a little bit more.
Yeah, it's probably up here.
Because our, at the same time of the ACA rate change, our health insurance rates also changed now. So it's kind of a double whammy. also changed now, so it's kind of a double whammy.
Yes, yeah, we've got a double whammy on that.
Yeah, so.
And for example, the food service, speaking of food service, they were originally at 370 a month, and now they're going to 440 a month in order to meet the criteria for the government, so.
I love our government.
Non-negotiated contract increases. Um, so just wanted to kind of illustrate that, because otherwise it's kind of murky, how much more is there?
Yeah.
But, and then, so, and then we have one contract for approval. Any other discussion or comments about the general consent? All in favor of approving, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say nay. All right, thank you. And then we'll, uh, skip old business, because we don't have any. We have a joint resolution with the Fergus Falls Education Association honoring veterans, whereas Independent School District 544 has veterans in its employ who have served in the armed services, or armed forces, and whereas the district and Fergus Falls Education Association wish to recognize all those who have given so much for their country, be it hereby resolved, that School District Number 544 and the Fergus Falls Education Association honor and appreciate all veterans for their dedication to our country and service to others. I will offer that resolution, move for its adoption. Is there a second?
Seconded.
Any discussion on the resolution? Quick, please, which one's second?
Matthew, thank you. I don't look up. I'm in trouble. Thank you.
All right, Matthew Lemke?
Yes.
Missy Hermes, yes. Steven Biggessa?
Yes.
Melanie Cole?
Yes.
The resolution is adopted. All right, our next resolution is the canvassing of the returns of the votes for a school, district, state, general election, be it resolved by the school board of independent school district number 544 as follows. Number one, it's hereby found, determined, and declared that the general election of voters of the Fergus Falls School District held on November 8th, 2022 was in all respects duly and legally called and held. Number two, as specified in the attached abstract, in return of votes cast, a total of 10,476 votes for the district, of the districts voted and set election on, at set election, on the election of three school board members for four-year term vacancies on the board caused by the expiration of term on the first Monday in January of the next following general election, as follows. I don't think it makes much sense, but, um, Kirby Anderson got 5,053 votes, Missy Hermes 4,976 votes, Melanie Cole 4,454 votes, Tim, Timothy Nansen 2,611 votes, Arden Chono 2,215 votes, and number 80 writing votes. Number three, candidates Kirby Anderson, Missy Hermes, and Melanie Cole have received the highest number of votes, are elected for year terms beginning the first Monday in January 2023. Number four, the school district clerk is hereby authorized to certify the results of the election to the county auditor of each county in which the school district is located in whole or in part. Will someone offer that resolution and move for its adoption?
I'll offer the resolution, move for its adoption.
All right, and a second?
Seconded.
Okay, any discussion?
I'm just glad Kirby's not here, so he doesn't vote. So you look at his face, voting on the carefully announced votes.
Any other comments? All right, and clerk, okay. Matthew Lemke?
Yes.
Steven Biggessa?
Yes.
Melanie Cole?
Yes.
Missy Hermes?
Yes.
The resolution is adopted. Thank you. We, item number three is the first reading of fiscal year 2022, Fergus Falls Public Schools Financial Audit, duly noted, it's in the minutes, we had a report, and now it was in the minutes. Okay, number four, Fergus Falls Community Arena User Agreement Fees, Exhibit 8, um, are up for approval, the season from January 1st, 2023, March 31st, 2023, and then next year, October 1st, 2023, December 31st, 2023. Would someone move to approve that user agreement fee for the dates that are listed?
So moved.
All right, and a second?
One second.
Any other discussion on that? All in favor of approving, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say nay. That is approved. Um, this is a very long resolution that will get a summary format, and it says, "It is the resolution establishing combined polling places for multiple precincts and designated hours during which the polling places will remain open for voting for school district elections not held on the day of the statewide election." And so, um, be it resolved by the school board of independent school district number 544, state of Minnesota, as follows. Number one, pursuant to Minnesota Statute, section 205A, point 111, the precincts and polling places for school district elections are those precincts or parts of precincts located within the boundaries of the school district which have been established by the cities or towns located in whole or in part within the school district. The board hereby confirms those precincts and polling places so established by those municipalities." And then it goes on to indicate that we can combine polling places, and should we have an election that would come if a board member died or something, um, then?
Or levied.
Or moved, or levied, or bond, but probably.
There's so many other ones.
We have it. It was the first thing that came to my mind.
No, just joking.
So, but then we have this established by virtue of, um, passing this regu- resolution. This resolution will be in full format in the minutes, which are going to be posted on the school website. Um, and the combined polling places, rather than, um, establishing, uh, polling at every location where generally is, we would combine it for the efficiencies and the saving of money, and the, they would be then at the public library, the YMCA, uh, M State, and Bigwood Event Center. So that, what highlights did I miss?
No, that's perfect.
All right.
Yes, the situation is, is that the statute says that we do have to have this in place at this time in order, if we do have any future levy or bond, um, if we don't have this in place, then we do have to open all polling places and, um, support them with budgets and, yeah, the expense is extremely high. So this is an annual resolution that we have been having for probably like the last three or four years now, which is a change-up. Before, they'd allow us to do it anytime during the year, they don't allow us to do that anymore. This is our one chance to just do it. Um, generally, we don't use it, but we do want to have it placed just in case that there is something that does come up that, um, would constitute a, some type of an election outside of our general state-type election, so.
Great. Thank you for the summary that didn't include death, I appreciate that. All right. I will offer this resolution, move for its adoption, is there a second?
One second.
All right, and is there any further discussion on this resolution? Clerk, you may. Cole? Steven Biggessa?
Yes.
Matthew Lemke?
Yes.
Melanie Cole?
Yes.
Missy Hermes?
Yes.
The resolution is adopted. All right, and then, um, as Ms. Hermes indicated in her board report, um, item number six of our agenda under new business is revisions to the following school district policies. We've received these in advance for our review, and they will also be listed on the school website. So revisions to policies number 208, 410, 415, 416, 417, 418, 515, 534, 544, 603, and 604. Um, will someone offer that, or will someone make that motion to adopt these revisions?
So, hold a second.
Okay. Missy?
Missy.
Yeah.
We've got to get a buzzer.
And so, the, um, and I didn't read the, the variety of the titles, and before we vote, would someone prefer that I read the titles attached to the numbers? Is that important?
It's going to be on our minutes on the site, so.
All right. Then, um, um, any other discussion? All in favor of approving of the revisions, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say nay. That is approved. We, uh, we're just going to have a short collaborative, um, work session, talking about the school board conference in January and, and the evaluation for the superintendent. We'll meet, oh yeah, don't forget, Wednesday morning at 7:00 AM.
Seven bells.
Meeting with the city council, where we'll discuss proposed, uh, property purchase for an elementary school, and then our next regular school board meeting Monday, the 28th. So with all that on our radar, would someone be willing to motion to adjourn?
So moved.
A second, huh?
One second.
All right. Steven? Yep. Any discussion? All in favor of adjourning, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say nay. And we are adjourned, and thank you.